Yes ma'am. Right. Um, yeah, I saw that. First of all, um, apologies from Becky Wing and Jane, Heather in Turner and Rasha and Ara. And no others, are there?
Not Turner.
No George or. No George or. No. Um. Then decorations of interest. Any decorations of interest? None of these planning applications? No. And then the minutes. Um, can anyone not to approve them? Propose the.
Yeah, go on, I will.
You will?
I'll propose.
Yeah.
If it lasts another day.
Um, seconded by councillor Austin, sorry.
How's your Austin wasn't in attendance?
Oh, was I not in attendance? In that case.
I was, I was.
You're getting the wrong minutes. Well, I will second it.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Um. First of all, this is the Ramsgate Conservation Area Public Consultation. To consider the council's response to the Consultation Area Public Consultation, details of which can be found on the TDDC website. It is actually a labour of love to read through it all. It is enormous and I must congratulate them. It's a very, very well-produced document. Um. It's still in draft form. David has suggested that we print some copies off for people to have a look at. Um, the relevant, well, in my opinion, some of the relevant bits are their proposals of what should be done. Um, the climate change stuff, which I think is much more tricky than they're making it out to be. And, um, and the fact that TDC, that Ramsgate Town Council is not mentioned in it at all. And TDC will not have the resources. Who's going to pay for it all? Now, I don't know how we put that in.
As a council, are we writing a?
Hmm.
As a council, are we writing a?
Yes, we're supposed to give a council.
Dean, could you get it on the screen for me, please?
This is by the 13th of December.
By Monday. Indeed, yeah.
All we can do is individually write in to you and Eileen and hope that you could put something together from.
By Monday.
Power of comments.
Right. But as an initial thing, can we say we're worried about, we're concerned about the resources at TDC to implement the recommendations.
Yeah, everything you've said up until now.
Yes, that we're concerned that Ramsgate Town Council's mentioned.
And Ramsgate Town Council could be a useful resource for them, but it's totally ignored. I mean, one thing, for example, they're recommending is that everything is photographed for a record. Who's going to do that? Maybe some of us could do some of that if they asked us nicely. But, yeah.
One recommendation from the presentation we had just now from Dave was to have a project manager. So TDC would provide fund or from wherever, some money from somewhere to actually deliver what they recommend from the review.
Well, that would be.
So, but, you know, I mean, basically the question is where is the money coming from? What ports of money are they going to access? Who is going to do that?
Yes.
TDC presumably, but, you know, TDC hasn't got any money, so.
No, and I don't think one person would be enough, but.
And it's a sort of, it's a wish list, isn't it? It's, it's a welcome thing. It's got some really good, um, information in it and recommendations. But how is it going to be delivered? TDC struggling as he has to deliver, you know, the services that they have to deliver. So how are they going to deliver this? They've got one conservation officer at TDC. They've got one planning enforcement officer plus an assistant. That's it. And they're refusing to, they say they haven't got any money to fund any other officer posts to deliver that sort of, you know, zane music. So they're going to.
Yeah, I asked them a question, a very simple question the other week. And I was told I had to email in. Is what constituents worry? And they replied, we're all working from home. And we will reply to you within three weeks. Sorry, councillor.
I was going to say, um, obviously some of the work that this has written, that has resulted in this report was funded through Historic England. And I know they've got good links with Historic England. It may be that there's some funding there. But your point about working with town councils, working with voluntary groups, that the conservation area place was all done by volunteers. You and I were amongst them.
Yeah.
Uh, goodness knows how, when we were girls, I think it was. And it's taken rather a long time to come to Croatia. But the fact is that actually there are lots and lots of willing volunteers in Ramsgate who could do bits of this work if only we could establish a proper relationship. Perhaps mediated through the town council to arrange that.
Well, I hope this officer that they're appointing will.
Yeah. Well, you're the part of that, but they've, these ones have been location, haven't they? Between the HAZ and the conservation area and everything seems to move around. I, I emailed Louisa Ratherby about something the other day and it turned out that should move to Louise Askew. And it's very difficult to keep track of. So I definitely think we should be very enthusiastic about it. Very enthusiastic about the recognition of the fabulous assets we have in Ramsgate. But disappointed that the role of the town council and the community.
Yes, so we're going to welcome the report as a very thorough. This is my proposal, I think. We welcome the report as a very thorough document. We are concerned about the delivery.
Yeah.
Um, because TDC is understaffed, even if they get a project officer. And the Ramsgate Town Council would like to be part of the implementation. And perhaps to organise volunteer groups. Is that a proposal?
That's your, your.
Your proposal, yeah?
Plus, as councillor Green suggested, that any of us who spot any other opportunities that the town council should be commenting on should email.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Keep it out of that to the response.
Particularly those councillors that have wards that this forms.
Where it's particularly relevant, yeah.
Yeah. Um. Right, so is that a proposal?
That's your proposal.
My proposal. Is anyone going to second that?
Councillor Austin.
Councillor Austin.
The councillor.
Uh, can we have a vote on that? All those in favour?
Okay, thank you.
Good, because I don't know how we're going to deal with that otherwise. But I think that's a good idea. But you'll have to do it today, tomorrow. And because I'm stressed with family and work at the moment.
Well, just send them to me and I'll deal with the document and pass it to you. Send, just send everything to me. Thank you.
Then the next biggie is the Highways and Prudence Plan. We've all put forward ideas.
Do you want me to go through?
Yes, go through it.
Okay, you've got a report from the town clerk, item five. I have another agenda if anyone wants one. Um, basically she's supplied you with, um, a version of the head. Are we able to get it on the screen? Yeah, it's this, that one, please. So what Laura has done is she's, she's got everything into, um, she puts it into groups. So you've got signage, we'll just wait for it to open. So councillors have come in with their, um, concerns, ideas, and Laura has created this document. Um, things that have crossed out are either already implemented or they have been reported already to KCC. So the document is there.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
If they have been already reported, does that mean that something's going to happen? Or is it just?
Just it's been reported. I was thinking the same thing, having you said it.
Maybe we ought to include them as well.
This can't be done on that one. There are things that KCC need to be doing, um, in response to reports.
Could we have, I've been suggesting, sorry to butt in without going through the chair, but if we had a column at the end as to action fulfilled or action, you know, that happened.
The way. Okay. Um, currently they're actually crossed through. They are still visible. The line's been put through.
But if we had an extra column at the end as opposed to what the action was at the end of it? So reported, fantastic, line through, brilliant. But what was the outcome?
Oh, so we're looking for an outcomes, yeah, sure.
An outcomes column at the end really would be great.
Yes.
So at least we can see that, yes, if it's had a line through it, something before. But at the end of the day.
Sure.
What, what came of that report?
Exactly. Could it actually, I'm just looking at the one that's actually on the screen where it says KCC confirmed this can't be done. Is there space to incorporate that extra column within that one? Can't seem to remember.
Yes, what's column H effectively? It's what Helen's saying.
Yeah, so what councillor Nicky's saying, I must. That can be incorporated into column H.
Yeah.
Sure. It is partly done.
Yeah, outcome query, yeah.
Yes, yes.
It's about expanding.
So keep that updated, basically.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Keep that updated. So you still want those to remain in there?
Yes.
Um, and with a view to keep monitoring.
That has come to a dead halt at the moment. Anyway, so Effingham Street, which has disappeared, Dean. Um. We would need to fund a traffic survey to ensure there is not a detrimental effect on adjacent roads. And the speed, I mean, the speed is slightly controlled by the narrowness of the road as far as I can see. And that, I know people do speed up in order not to meet somebody. Um, but the alternate, alternative is very.
Which one's Effingham?
Very difficult.
Effingham Street as well. I thought it was, I thought it was. So basically Laura is asking how important is this to council? Um, because the cost is £6,000 plus, um, and £500 for the survey.
Yes.
I would, I would suggest it's not as important as the next phase of our 20 mile an hour installation across Ramsgate. If we were going to allocate monies, I would have suggested, because I mean, that whole monies could be, you know, sort of a bit of central harbour or like the town centre or something like that, whichever next phase we're doing. Then I, I would suggest, um, bypassing that for now, that's mine.
I would agree. I, I think as local drivers, we know that it's a difficult road. And I think everyone that's local that uses it knows it and we're kind of used to it. And I know that's not a solution.
No.
But at the same time, it's, we deal.
Alternative. And. There isn't, there's very little other alternative.
No, I'm not sure what else you would do with that.
Will you go up? Or Elling?
I'd be honest.
Perfect.
Is, is that part of the town's 20 mile an hour zone anyway? Because if it isn't, we just incorporate that with the rest of the town centre in a 20 mile an hour zone. You've sort of like knocked it on the edge.
Something you can do on that anyway.
You've actually managed.
Yes, councillor Young.
I wonder if there would be a possibility to have some sort of mirror on the wall at the end? So people could see if something's coming up. It would, it would then give you a chart because you get right up the corner. Somebody else is coming the other way. Whereas if you've got a mirror up, you can see that there is something coming.
You're at the top end, you're thinking at the top end.
Yeah.
But you'd have to put a post up there in KCC.
Well, there's a wall there, isn't there? They might.
KCC will resist mirrors to them now.
Yes.
They don't like them.
And it's a private wall. They won't just, you can't just commandeer a private wall. They'd have to put a post up. It'd have to be independent.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I think it's a very good idea.
It doesn't actually have to be a glass mirror. It's a reflection so you can see, especially at night. And there's people on the pavement as well there.
No, I think it's, I mean, it's a road that we do nearly twice a day as pedestrian and occasionally as a driver. Um, I think that's a very good idea. But I think people very much slow down when they get to the top because of that.
I know, I do.
That problem. And so if there are difficulties with putting up a mirror.
Right, but I agree with councillor Nicky. I don't think it's a, I wouldn't put it as a priority at the moment. It's. It's a priority. So is this a proposal to move this or?
Um, no, no, we leave it. Sorry councillor.
It's a different issue. I, I miss what you said about the ones that are crossed out.
They've been suggested to KCC, they've been reported to KCCs.
Been reported to KCCs already.
Yes.
Yeah, but we leave them in because reporting them means nothing.
Yeah.
I would, I would, maybe rather than delete it completely, I would put it down as the end, you know, somehow, so somehow it slips to the bottom of the priorities.
Yes.
It has been raised and it is a difficult road, but it's not a priority, so it.
It was, Richard was very much wanted that. He was always going on.
Get it done.
He wanted it one way, but I don't know how.
I don't know where, I don't know where else the traffic, I, I'm not sure what other options there are. Exactly, yeah.
Sorry, Nick. Hello?
I also, um, you might want to get in contact with the police. The reason I ask this is I used to be the chair of the old town action group in Margate. And there was a particular scenario in Margate, the same thing, where we could have made it like a one-way system or we could have done something. And the police said, you can't do that specifically because it's their access out to something in emergency. And I can see if you wanted to get from the top of the high street or anything down there into sort of like the Westcliff area going up that way, you want to come down that way. They're not going to turn it into a, a, a road that's going to make their route in an emergency longer. So that is something that they were very much consideration of. If we were to suggest that to KCC anyway. So, you know, we, we'd need to find that out if we were going to suggest this.
Yeah, you, you, I actually witnessed it when, because they've had a lot of roadworks there. And the police came shooting down. I, and they couldn't get through. So they had to go back up and a long chapel place or a long.
Chapel place is right down past Waitrose.
Yeah, they had very big say at the time with regards to this.
And that's often blocked with bin lorries or whatever. Right, so feed that in. Everybody agree with that, that we leave it in, but it's not.
I just wanted to make a little point on the end of that about driver psychology. Because it might not happen immediately, but if you do make that one way, you'll speed the traffic up. Because everyone will know it's safer to speed.
Yes.
Because there's going to be no one coming in the opposite direction. That means at all the junctions both end as well. So I think at the moment, drivers are a bit more cautious because it's dangerous. Like when.
No, I agree with that, though they do tend to put their foot down if it's coming.
In the mid, but that's where there's visibility, but.
Yeah.
Bottom, yeah. Just so, yes.
Yes, councillor Young.
If, if you feel that they can't have a mirror, could we ask the, you know, road safety, is there something else that we could have there that would say to people, you know, slowdowns or whatever? You know.
I think the fact that there's a corner, I think it does that.
Well, you'd think so, wouldn't you?
Councillor.
If you could just put a sign up saying sound forms, that's all we need to do.
No, 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 I don't.
I think you're allowed to do that.
They lived there, they bought it by their own.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Um.
They didn't look, they saw what was there when they bought.
The, um, well, we've just got some friends moved into, uh, George Street. And they're completely amazed at how noisy it is from cars coming up and going down George Street. They'll get used to it. But, um.
I'd remove it. Just remove it. Chairman, you have a proposal on the table, proposed by councillor Nicky, seconded by councillor Christian. I probably, that's the one, eh?
To. To.
That this Effingham Street is not considered a pri, a priority at this time, but leave within the document. Take a vote on that.
Yeah, I quite agree. So number three. Oh, so they're on it. Yeah, I. Right, that's unanimous. Uh, signage. St. Street. Ramsgate, Broad Street and Prue St.
The town clerk has, um, put all the signage that was reported, um, via account came in to her to compile this document together. And she's put here, improved signage can often be a very quick win and one of the least costly activities if you're not changing the way traffic moves, which would then require a TRO. And if new poles aren't required. So she's lumped them together. Um. And for the funding, if you lump all the signage together as one thing, one thing, because what's happening is KCC will fund one. One thing you want. So that would be the, you know, a group of potential as one that they would fund. Um, so they're all listed there. I believe all of these come through, um, members.
That's, um, a good idea. That's another one where you come up to a right angle and have to turn right. But there is no alternative. Um, so is everybody happy with agreeing that? I can't really see it all, but.
Um, then you've got double yellow lines list detailed in, in, en masse again within the document.
Oh, I see, sorry, there's more signage.
So signage is all the way down here and then it's double yellow lines.
Okay, so, um, Broad Street speeding round Chapel Corner and uphill. 20 mile an hour. High Street, Ramsgate, West Broad Street. There are various cyclist dismount signs, but.
From the corner of Baperentis, isn't it? When it comes up to the.
Broad Street, yeah.
To Harbury Street. Yes, 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 thank you.
Um.
So again, the town clerk has grouped these together. And she stated it would save money with the TRO and contractor if they can do various sites in one go rather than go this bit now.
Yes.
Let's do the whole law. If, if it's agreed that they would do the whole law. Again, the same thing with the double yellow lines as detailed there. Um, ideas of double yellow lines that might be needed. Um.
The one that I'm Turner Street, Broad Street. I think we should just take matters into our own hands and put some planters across the end bit like they do in Margate.
Yep.
So that, I know we can't many of that. Um, so that drivers who already come down there, they, the little seaside village, you know, the children's play place, they're worried about the way the cars come around that corner, especially when the Poundland lorry is there and children running out. I think we ought to close that road off. I think I've said that somewhere else, but anyway. Yes, sorry.
Is there not a way that we can include in this the recommendation that the Poundland lorry and other similar heavy vehicles are allowed to it?
I think, I think I've said that.
We make them go round the back. I don't see it, but I may not have.
I thought we, we said a way.
I saw a mention, something about the weight, but.
Yeah.
I really think we should be.
Yeah.
We should be requiring deliveries to go round the back and we should make that there.
Well, I've written to them and they said their lorry's too big. Well, they should.
Well, they should have more of a lorry.
But this lorry delivers both to High Street and to Margate and to Broadstairs.
But it has destroyed the paving in our pedestrianized areas.
I've told them no, yeah. Sorry councillor, no.
Yeah, so I've had a lot of people ask me about when Windstoke Crescent, Windstoke Way, but I'm not so sure a lot of them will agree with taking putting yellow dust lines down there. Mostly three, four car families.
Down where?
Down Windstoke Way.
Oh, can we get on to that in a minute?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Nice, sorry councillor Moore.
It's about this Poundland.
Yeah.
It's, it's a shame really, but there is room because when, uh.
Woolworths.
Woolworths were there, their deliveries didn't come to the front. They went round back where they should have gone.
They've got a loading bay and they left.
Double loaded bay round there that could use it.
Yes. No, no, I've written to them and that's what they said, councillor Nicky.
Thank you for writing then, that's a first thing and I'm glad you have. Should we write from the town council as in from, you know, Laura, headed note paper, et cetera, et cetera? I don't mind if that's with your name on it or my name on it again to say, you know, this is an issue and, you know, things have been ruined. You know, so, so that we make it slightly more public so that when we receive response again, that's not exactly a name and shame, but, you know, go down that route like Southwater with regards to, we get a better correspondence with them that we are showing that the public that we are doing this.
Because there's also.
Yes, yes, exactly.
There's also a savers one that comes up, but not so often and that's in the morning. And I don't think it's quite as big and they have no back access.
Start with Poundland and you, and you show us the letters that you've written. If you believe it, then we, we as a council write. And again, if you want it to be from the chair or from the, you know, the chair of the planning, you know, it's a chair, won't it? I mean, I don't mind. But I was just thinking if they've already got your name, they get somebody else maybe.
Well, I did say I was a councillor.
If you want it to be, like I say, we.
Yeah, yeah, I did it for my council.
Exactly, yeah.
No, we have put something about the weight down it. You know, it's got, I thought it had eight, it's actually got six. It's huge. It's huge.
You proposed that, that we actually write from. Thank you.
Yeah.
And we're writing to the.
The Poundland.
Poundland, okay.
Um. So we're still on.
Do you want to vote on that, please?
Yeah, all those in favour writing to Poundland?
Yep.
Hello?
Hi, no.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Reading, sorry.
So, um.
Just give me a.
Turner Street, I think it's more, there is a sign there, but they don't agree with it, drivers that come along there.
Is that the one, is that Turner Street a bar?
So.
We're looking at signage or.
Yeah, we're still on.
We've got. That's signage. Yeah. I must admit, I notice my ward, but I've never noticed a problem with the signs, sorry.
Well, because I walked down there.
Yeah. I, so I don't.
Um, I noticed that.
I drive on it, but I've never noticed a problem with the signs.
I hope you drive when you're allowed to.
I mean, what I'm saying is I drive around the town, but I.
Yeah.
I've noticed a problem with those signs.
No, they come shooting down that corner at all times of day. Because I think they think there's, and also they go the wrong way as well when they come around there. Um, yeah, so.
Is there a way for us to recommend as part of this proposal that KCC review signage generally in Ramsgate town centre? Because there seem to be a lot of redundant signs.
Yes, there are.
A lot of redundant posts sat there, you know, the ones outside the, the, uh, Old Peter's Express, for example, but being sat there for, I don't know how long. And therefore such signage as there is, is quite difficult to spot in amongst all the clutter.
Yes.
And that perhaps if we had fewer signs, but better positioned, it, it, then people might take more notice of them.
That's a very good idea and some of it will come under that, whatever grant that is to do the seafront.
Yeah, well, I have put it in the, in my recommendations on that.
Yeah, to get rid of some of the clutter down there.
To get rid of all the clutter.
Yeah. Sorry councillor Green.
We have a potential volunteer, Peter Burrow.
Oh, yes.
Who I'm sure would, we're only too willing to make a start on that.
Excellent, he'd be great, yeah.
Can we, can we officially write to him and ask him to?
Well, we're going to anyway.
Make good on his promise, well, sooner rather than later.
Brilliant, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and then maybe we can come back to this. Um, anything more? Signage.
You're right.
Uh, so we're going to double yellow lines. Winter Stoke Crescent, you wanted to talk about that. Do we need to vote on something? Um. It's very hard to deal with this, by.
But writing to Peter, we should vote on it.
Yeah, shall we, so I'll second, you're proposing it, I'll second it. And all those in favour?
Yep.
Yeah. Right. Um, double yellow lines. And you wanted to say something.
Well, this is about that road.
Yeah, we know.
What it is, is off the front and it gets people in a dump, dump and pop drive. Everyone uses it, they usually come in from Broad. Everyone uses it, they usually come in from Broadstairs, so it's going out.
Hmm.
Now, you could put double yellow lines on that, all that does is restrict the people who actually live there. Because as I say, they've got two or three cars each and a and a one car driveway, so they park outside.
Hmm.
What you would need to do there is make it one way, so it discourages people from using that. What they need to do is make it one way from the seat front coming out.
And you've got to go down Tannet Road.
That's all good. I think about that at Tannet Road if you want to stop, if you want to sit there and wait half an hour for a bus to come down, that's fine. Um, yeah, Tannet Road's just as bad.
Hmm, well, I, they have called me up there, the residents.
Yeah, I know, I have. I answered it. I I I can't stand it.
Because somebody has got a load of cars who pass and vans who pass right on the junction and the bu- the bus can't get.
Yeah.
Through when it's diverted. Now, I thought I.
Open top bus which comes down.
Yeah, the open, I've tried, I spoke to stagecoach about that and they're, they apparently they have much more sway with K C C.
Hmm.
And the bus operators and they, there's a woman in Canterbury who was supposed to be dealing with it, but it's not happened. Um, but one way, they they would, the residents are talking about mini roundabouts, but that's not a good act. There are lots of accidents there.
There are close, there's people getting really annoyed, you know, you get a lot of filthy language on Winter Stoke Way.
But the people, the people in Winter Stoke Crescent are very, very entitled.
Yeah.
And they, they object very strongly to people parking anyone near the junction, which they're entitled to do.
Well, it is.
Yeah, I know.
Good point.
Yeah.
I I am embarrassed to admit that I sent my comments to the town clerk this afternoon, having failed to send them previously and one of my suggestions was this, which is obviously not in my ward, but it's near where I live.
That's a model.
Um, so I come, you know.
Make it one way.
Quite regularly, make it one way. Alternatively, have a look at that there is an enormously wide pavement on one side.
Pat will tell you about that.
Which could be used differently for parking unless I.
Open.
Pardon, sorry.
No, no, it's, sorry councillor Moore, you know all about that, don't you?
It was open. They've normally done it in these last maybe fifteen years.
Yeah. So could they actually.
People lived there have taken over the pavement to park on.
So could they either widen the road or make it one way or create parking spaces facing the other way, diagonal parking spaces, so you get a lot more done there and then you could have.
There's not actually, there's not actually a shortage of parking, though my Karen, who always phones me up about everything, claims, claims that uh the people from the um surgery part there.
Yeah, they do.
Of course they do, because there isn't enough parking for surgery.
No, um, but it's never full up.
What's never full up?
The road, the Winter Stoke Crescent.
But it, but it is, but it's, but it does queue all the way around, but in both directions.
Hmm.
Regularly.
Uh, I use that way a lot.
Yes.
If you come in off Dunton Park Drive into Stoke Crescent, there's cars parked there and you get to wait here till the car is up.
Yes.
Now, if, as you say, the other bit, the the wider pavement was open.
Was open.
You'd be able to continue.
Yes.
But you can't, you have to sit there and wait.
Yes.
And then sometimes you get passed. But if you had to make that one way.
Hmm.
You're not, you're only causing a disturbance somewhere else because if you go down the next road, there's cars parked on either side and it's that bit and the same as the one after and the one after.
But you can't get through.
Cars are a control of of speeding. And they are a control to dissuade people from going that way as well.
Yeah, but we we need that road opening up again. I mean, lots of people uh on Winter Stoke Way have had a a drop curb and
Hmm.
front of the garden and for the parking, but there's still cars park on there.
Yes.
You know, people who live there, they park their cars on it.
No, that's what I say, their own.
So it should be removed, so you can drive on it, it's your, drive on it.
Either make it, make it properly two way there so the space or take that away, make it residence parking and have double yellow on the other side so that people can actually go straight down and they're not having to wait.
So are you going to put a proposal that we do either or, that we ask for either or?
That we ask K C C to consider what would be the best way of doing it?
Yes.
I think if you find residence parking, you can pay for residence parking, but whether or not nobody else can park there doesn't matter. Anybody can.
Anybody can park then.
If they have a residence park, so you're not paying for your own bit.
No.
I mean, I'd like a disabled B outside my house.
But you can go in.
Can park on it, whereas a blue bachelor.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we need residence parking there yet.
When I said residence parking, I'm sorry, I didn't, what I meant was parking spaces for residents and whoever else. I didn't mean it as as in dedicated residence.
Many of them have got their own drives that hold four or five cars.
The difficulty is we don't want to be encouraging people to pave over their front gardens because of drainage and flooding and all of that. So it's, we we're trying to definitely agree with this one.
Yes, so what's, so our proposal is that we are asking them to.
Consider the general problem of Winter Stoke Crescent and look at the space that's available and decide what might help. Whether it be widening the road, whether it be creating more parking spaces on the bit that the residents park in any way and creating more double yellow on the other side so that the traffic can go through, or whether it be making a one way up street. Is that, sorry, I can't keep up with it.
Well, I'll second that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's brilliant.
So can we have a vote on that?
No, it's fine, it's okay.
Please. Yeah, I know everybody might not remember all the details of it.
It's written down there as well.
Okay.
No, no, just talk about Winter Stoke Crescent and on. Right, so where we've got to this particular night. Uh, do we vote?
No, but yes.
Yeah, vote, vote, vote.
What we've already.
Put your hand up, for them to consider.
Consider all those options, see whether they can do something to improve it, basically.
Yeah.
And any other options they can think of.
Yes, so Leyby and York Street. I don't understand why they don't allow loading in that Leyby. Because.
Good idea.
That's what it's used for. I know it will be, I mean, it's already exploited.
Yes.
Well, I don't know.
We need enforcement again, don't we? It's it's fine for loading, but.
They, 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 if they took away the yellow lines and enforced fifteen minutes loading, that would be.
Yes.
And the same in Harbour Street.
This is what you've got within your document, this is what you're asking, this is what the document is is coming up to write with ideas. You've just amended, you've just amended the Winter Stoke one, so all of this is.
So do we agree with those two Leybys?
Yes.
Yep. Yeah, all in favour?
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody in favour? I don't know Herbert Road and Southwood Road.
I don't know that one.
Who's, whose ward is that?
Which is Herbert Road.
Oh, it's mine. Um.
Which is Herbert Road.
It's St Laura's Court, isn't it?
Southwood.
St Laura's down the other car, it's another car.
Where does it come on?
So, so do you know where the water tower is?
Yeah.
Right, so Herbert Road.
Oh, it's one of those, yeah.
It's on, do you know, right, so Grange Road, my house is on Grange Road and behind me Herbert Road is sort of like, does, does that's perpendicular. You've got the water tower there and then you've got Southwood, which is parallel to Grange Road.
Yeah.
So top of Herbert Road, there's so much parking round there, is that what they're talking about? There's the the whole Southwood Road and all the little roads off it, because you've got little sort of like dead end roads. All of that is absolute parking.
All that area around.
Yeah.
Just so junction protection, don't they?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and just see if we can lump these together. Estate Road and Canterbury Road East. I don't know all these.
Yes.
But yes, all of those, all of those that are saying there where it's junction protection, basically, I agree with you, it's.
Yes.
Yes, so can we just jump through those?
Yes.
On the next one, on the next.
Yes, Lidl, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we propose?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it's actually safer.
Yes.
We're all up for that. Good, okay, next one, what are we on? We're on.
Boundary Road.
Twenty mile an hour.
Well, we've got twenty mile an hour Boundary Road, twenty mile an hour Victoria Parade, twenty mile an hour everywhere in town.
Yes. I think you, can I?
Boundary Road, sorry, yes.
Can I? Can I step in your re- recommendations we did in the report? Or, um, that the town clerk suggests that a small working group is established to consider which roads should be included in the twenty mile per hour zone. This would present a starting point to the project presentation to K C C, technical surveys would then confirm the specifics.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so that's her third recommendation.
Yeah.
So that would cover your twenty, the twenty mile an hour zone, as in a working group will look at it, bring it back to committee and deal with it that way. That that's Laura's recommendation.
Great.
Um.
I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm saying, um, I've had quite a few, um, bits of feedback from residents about Boundary Road that cars and lorries go down and up there very quickly. Um, yeah, I think that would be a good place for twenty, but um, I think there's a problem because it's a bus route, K C C doesn't like doing twenty mile an hour sort of very calming when there's a bus route. I would, I would get that to a small working party and say, oh, let's not do that now, sorry to interrupt, but.
Yeah. Um. I'm desperate to get outside my house, but.
You want to work through the recommendations?
Yeah, we've, we've got this written down, have we?
Yeah, recommendation from the town clerk, number one, should the three issues raised by local residents be added into the hip? Are these matters that the committee supports? Have I, have those are, we can we report?
Find out what they are.
They are, there's quite a lot, um.
You've done a bit, keep going.
Do, 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 I'm trying to find out.
Got record, do you want me to read them out? I've got them here. Request one. Suggest on behalf of my fellow Ramsgate residents to you and the Ramsgate councillor team with your help, blah, 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 um. A roll out at the same time, the High Street project extension, the introduction of twenty miles an hour calming measures. Pedestrianisation of the Harbour Parade, linking it to the car park, the development of the clock tower.
Yep.
Um. There's other flower boxes and things, there's a whole, there's a whole range of things that are part and part of this hip and not, so. It's a, it's a bit of a mixed up request, to be honest with you. Those are the two main things in that first request, however, so the twenty miles an hour and then linking up the Harbour Parade with the calming measures.
I don't think there's an option in suggesting additions to the future, I think.
No.
And now.
No, I can be.
No, we've, we've tried that at the presentation and we got turned down at that, so I wouldn't.
Um, so where are we?
In the request number two, there's, it's again, it's blind corners, so we're talking about junction protection.
Yeah.
Um.
Yep.
We're talking too much public transport on certain, on on days, Monday to Saturday. I'm not sure there's anything we can do that.
Can I just say that request number two, I had a lengthy exchange with a resident on that because they wrote to.
Right.
For, and um that has already been to K C C and 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 looked at and it'd be unlikely anything is going to be done, no harm in putting it in. Mini roundabout, has anybody suggested a mini roundabout? No, no, it it's the junction at the top, isn't it?
No, they can't put a mini roundabout in there.
A resident suggested to me that she would go out and paint a mini roundabout on the road outside Ramsgate Place one night when nobody was looking.
It's too far.
That might, that might work.
Far too small.
It's, it's, um, it is a difficult junction at the best of times, but K C C responded that um there have been no fatalities there, therefore there's no, no need to do anything. Fundamentally, that was the answer. Um, and as far as the thundering traffic going up and down the hill and potential damage to the foundations of properties was, well.
Wait till we get the airport.
Yeah, first, yeah, sorry, that one I'm, I'm.
Councillor Moore?
Sorry.
Yeah. Have you, sorry, have you?
Yeah, I'll do.
No, sorry. Uh, I'm looking at this section of Dunton Park Drive. K C C said they will investigate, but K C C have already said there's nothing they want to do because there's never been any deaths in the house.
Right.
Knocked out from my house and there has been three crashes in the last three months. One car went into, across the road from me, went into a wall, knocked the wall down. Another one, next door but one at that side of me, had a car that its front was on the floor. It had been hit head on and its front was laid on the floor. Don't know where its wheels went. And then next door but one that way, no, next door that way, they had the other car outside and they were there for, what, five or six days before they removed them.
Were these all noted with the police? Because you need that police record.
The police have got records of them.
Right.
Because the police were, and there were an ambulance came to the poor old boy who went through the wall.
Are there any fatalities?
You know, and this road is so fast.
They're so keen on fatalities.
Although they've got traffic calming measures.
Yeah.
You can still get two cars.
Yeah.
And that's what they don't.
It's a nice wide road, isn't it?
They go straight through.
Yeah, it's a nice wide road.
And there's a car.
Okay, yeah.
You can't have them going that fast, they'll kill somebody.
Yes, councillor, oh councillor Austin.
Could I suggest that perhaps we put Dunton Park Drive in a- a- along with some of the others that residents have suggested, which, some of which were also on my list and some others on my list, into a, a, a group for a working group to have a look at with a pretty, either recommending other sorts of traffic calming or recommending lower speed limits or something else of the kind, because I think they're going to need more discussion and we've got time.
I think so too.
And they need looking at in a bit more detail, who's people who really know, you know, the the ward councillors or or residents, people who really know what's going on there, so. South Eastern Road, for example, which is a residence recommendation from, I've had several residents talking about. And also several other.
What they're saying about South Eastern Road?
That people belt along it with terrific road. So would you be recommending that request one, two and three from um residents are looked at by the working group? With a view to, with a view to adding to the hip as. Yes. As we see fit.
Sorry. Councillor Green?
Humbly suggest. The ones that aren't.
Great minds think alike. I was just, just going to suggest that these three requests
Yes.
We're going to have to respond to, which means somebody, a working group, is going to have to look at each, each one.
Well, I don't know whether we, I mean, we can respond to them. I don't know whether we have to, oh, have they?
They've written.
Well, tell them to respond by time to Red K C C. And. The one that, that you can't open the window because of buses.
Councillor Austin has proposed, I need a second, I was at the work. Working group look at these three requests as well as her own request. My own, quite appallingly late. So the, the working group will be established and they will look at these, these matters plus. There is some overlap there because some of them are on my list, they're already, most of the residents are already. Take a vote on that.
Um, all those in favour? That's everybody. It's quite hard to deal with all this, but you're quite right, a working party, um. And I think personally, I think I worry about buses.
Yes.
Well, the working party's going to that, so they won't get to the next thing.
And H G Vs are going to be more difficult when they've done the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could we write to these, to people that put these in?
And tell them that we're, yeah, of course. We're setting up for. Yeah, that would be, yeah, just in case of course.
So have we? Have we got through all this? I know, we've still got.
So we've done, we've done, I'm looking at the town clerk's recommendations, um.
Should these be added to the H R P?
So the, the town clerk is also recommending that you wait until Mr Burrows reported back on his work.
Yes.
The working group has come up with an initial proposal for the twenty mile per hour zone and then consider what the hip priority for twenty twenty two, twenty three should be at the subsequent committee meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so we've dealt with all that. Oh, sorry, councillor.
I was just wondering when we pulled the proposals in for different sections of our area. For the road problems, I wrote, I remember sending email into Richard. Have I, did I miss the boat or something with this? I sent in the different things about London Road. And the top of Wilson Road.
Okay.
Well, could you? East Road, you know, wherever.
I can reply. So.
Town clerk. Um, touch town clerk.
Former town clerk started this piece of work. Um, the document had seven, um. Areas on it. Did you say London Road?
Hmm, it's the speed that they come up from the round.
London Road isn't on there, so I would suggest that you send it again to our now town clerk.
Yeah.
Uh, for, should be looked at by the working group again, uh, as per councillor Austin's. And then it can be put in as, as recommended by the working group and then through to the committee. Is that okay? Sorry you have to repeat it.
Just resend the email.
There's nothing we can do because that was.
I just kind of looked through and I thought, there was nothing there about the ones that I.
Far and say, felt, felt braces, resend the email to.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes.
So are we finished with this? Oh. Uh, these small bits. Should we just leave all this with the. This is going down because it's.
Just K C C to investigate and we can't do anything until they come back to us.
Yes.
Oh, because the very last one is damage to road surface weight restriction for lorries. Oh, and I already asked Paul Balak about it and he said we can put it in.
Good.
Good.
Do you want to look at that? We need more information, don't we? Maybe it's traffic now. I mean, what is the weight? And councillor Crippington.
Sorry.
I mean, it says it's already been reported.
Hmm.
Sorry, I, I was just, I'm just looking at this one here and it says, ask for this to be included in Aldi section one O six spend. The Aldi section one O six spend is not eligible for that purpose.
That their answer to us?
No, that's what I know because we're spending section one O six money on play equipment in the park and that is all it can be used for.
Right, but who's written the?
That, that would be the town clerk, the town clerk has written that.
Yeah, not, the section one O six money will not cover. That's why I put it in the hit, in, into this. Because, um. It, it can't be covered by section one O six money. Other, so we, we've done, um, uh. Proposal for the section one O six money, which is being dealt with.
And that's play equipment?
It's for equipment in the park, basically, um. For the, the playground.
I could pass that one for you.
So that's why it's included in there.
Okay.
It's not, um. Eligible use of, of section one O six money for that purpose.
If we've done the old site though, we could, could be.
How can I, Austin?
Um, can I just go back, I'm really sorry, to the, uh, to the signage business because one of my things that I wrote to Laura. And I know this has come up before and I've sent it to the previous town clerk, is about. A, a no through road sign at the end of the year, which Paul Balak told us would cost three hundred and fifty pounds if he wanted to pay for it. They weren't going to pay for it because it's not a statutory requirement. It would stop cars coming through here thinking of the street. And it strikes me as a no brainer, but that's.
I wonder, is there some issue?
Again, there's clutter there, but there's nothing that actually says you can't get through from here to beach.
Is there some issue with the access to the blueberry house thing?
No.
No, they access it from the other side.
They have to access it from the other side. There's access to the site, but the car tax, it's, it's a no through road sign rather than a no entry sign.
Could we, um, could that be included in those crossing things that they're doing down there? Well, I can't remember what that fund is for.
The stuff they're doing for future high streets. I, I put it in again, but.
Yeah.
We'll put it in under signage for this.
It's just an extra signage item that strikes me.
We need a better sign to the car park anyway, so we'd go on the side of those.
And all that clutter that's there, I have no idea what.
Isn't that what we just said for signage? They need to look at it and then.
They need to look.
Yeah.
It's what Peter's doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So we're going to deal with all the rest of it by having a.
A working group and by asking Peter to do what he's kindly volunteered to do.
Yeah, okay, because we'll be here till midnight, won't we, others? And do we want to know who's on the working group or?
I think it needs to be emailed out first because there's a lot of people not here.
Yeah, right.
You requested email initially, I think.
Right, okay, because I imagine a lot of people will want to.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we need to vote or anything on that?
I think you're fine with what you've, what you've given me. Um, in a minute, there'll be a resolution with all that listed.
Right, okay. So the next thing is Southern Water.
So, um, a letter has been received. Um, we did write back to. Southern Water because we hadn't received a response and they emailed a letter they, um. Had sent. Um, and with a chart. Um, showing that they have done testing in Kent at various states. Uh, the areas are not in there, where they've done it are not in there. Um, the results are there, which are, are difficult to understand, but basically they're saying that the sampling has actually been fine. Um, they would. But, but they won't release, um, the location of their water supplier assets for, um, into the public domain. Um, and consider it not in the public interest. Um. So they withheld the actual detail. So the chart you have lists County of Kent, uh, the date and time. The sample, the result. Um, we asked about sanit, we cannot differentiate where these tests, this testing was done.
Un satisfactory answer because they're basically hiding that information that we've requested.
So do we propose, we welcome the reply, but we don't want from the fact that it's still all very secret. How do we phrase that? The withholding of information. Relevant information, yes, councillor Young.
I have concerns about all these new buildings that are going to be built. If we can't cope with the water and sanitation now. How are they going to do it at a later date when we've got another seven hundred plus houses, Manchester Road and then the other side?
Well, we were talking about that. I mean, the trouble here. Is it's a very old system and it's a combined system.
Yes, I know.
Where the surface water and sewage goes into the same drain which goes over. So these new houses. Um, the plumbers must be on to this, must have their own soakaways and, um.
And where is, where is all this water going to come from? Because.
It comes from.
Recommend, the recommended amount per person, per household is a hundred plus litres per day.
Yeah, yes.
I raised this during the local plan, um, hearings. And Southern Water just say we will cope.
But it's not working now, isn't it?
That, that apparently is as far as T V C can go. They have to put the question to the water supplier and accept what they say. That's what the planning inspector told us.
Right. Doesn't a lot of our water come from Medley?
Yes.
Yes. If, and I thought the world.
Doesn't come from well.
Sorry, councillor Nixon.
If I could make a proposal then, um, bearing in mind that we'd like to reply to this. I'd like to propose that we reply. And, and once we reply, we also put that on our website. So we make it very public and say this is extremely, um. You know, inefficient for want of a better word, you know, because it doesn't tell us exactly, it doesn't tell us anything. And then say, you know, because we are concerned with the amount of new builds that are coming across, you know, and the water supply. This is something that, you know, we need. We need to be aware of, so we can incorporate what councillor Young is sort of like asking with regards to where is this? And, and also the quality of the water that people are getting as well. But I think we ought to make it. Public by putting it on our website and letting.
Very good idea.
No.
Yes, councillor Young.
And I'll just say that if you recall in the last two years, when the weather was a bit warm and things got a bit dry. They suddenly said to us, oh, you might be a shortage of water. So if that was two years ago, all the buildings that have been built since then. And the next two years, how are they going to supply water to all these residents?
Well, according to councillor Green, they were asked that and they said they could cope and that's all we know at the moment.
So, so let's be specific and let's ask them so that they reply to us. And if they reply, we can cope. Then we'll take that further a- again, but let's reply to this and then ask that question.
Yeah.
Yes.
I propose that.
I'll second that, yeah. All those in favour?
Yeah.
They haven't actually answered the first two paragraphs in our.
Sorry?
They haven't actually answered the first two paragraphs in our letter because we didn't pose this question.
They did, do you remember, they did write to us before, but they didn't come back with this information, which is why, and they said they needed forty days to be able to do it. We then wrote back to them and said, forty days are up, love.
Oh, I see. So they did, they did reply about.
They did reply and I've got it on my phone if you wanted me to read it out. I don't think they necessarily answered that either, but I could definitely go back and look at their first letter. See what they've replied and then draft a letter with, uh, Laura and Pat, for example, and then, and then. Take it there.
That would be good.
Yeah.
They said that they're going to charge for information, but I think that's really unreasonable. Yeah, it says we would normally charge, but in this case we have decided to waive our charge.
Yeah, she.
That's, yeah.
They moved out of beaches for the whole summer and autumn and they want to charge to get.
What I want to know is how do they pay their fines? We pay it, do we?
No, according to the, the chief exec who did a map screening at T V C, he said, I wish to assure you that none of this is coming from customers. It's all coming from shareholders. He said, good, can we see your detailed accounts to tell us exactly how that works?
Yeah.
Chair, is it possible that we send a copy of our reply to Craig McKinley as well?
Certainly.
And, and our other MPs.
Can we do that?
I did it before, there was no response, but yeah, of course, I'll do it again. It's no problem.
Um, so we have a proposal from councillor Nixon. Did we vote on it or not? I've lost track.
No.
Um, no, we didn't. Um, to.
We should send it to the card.
To make this book our website. And just to show the residents that we're on the case as much as we can be.
Yes.
Yeah. Can we have a second of for that then?
Yeah, you have a second of yourself.
Oh, right, oh, right. Okay, let's all vote. I think that's fair enough. Right. Um. Move on to planning applications.
Now, your first application is ten Cliff Street, erection of a four storey building incorporating five two bed apartments. And three three bed apartments with associated parking, following the demolition of the existing garage stroke workshop and ancillary. Ancillary accommodation. It's come to you before, it's in the conservation area. Councillor Austin, you pulled this one in along with councillor Wing, um, overdevelopment in a conservation area. Uh, you did look at a previous application and Rams, and. Went back to them with Ramsgate Town Council objects to this application on the grounds that it is considered to be overdevelopment and not in keeping with the conservation area. And again, councillor Austin, you've said overdevelopment.
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've taken it down from a six story building to a four story building, but it's only reduced the number of flats by one. And we still think that it's inappropriate on the site, in the space and in an area that's already very, very built up.
Have you read the conservation officer's report on it?
No, I haven't.
Yeah, well, that's very interesting because they have reduced the height to be the same as the neighbouring buildings. But there is still more on top.
Yes.
Um, and the conservation officer is very, very unhappy.
Good.
About it because it's a narrow street and.
It's very, it's a small street.
Yes. More.
I was there on Friday.
Yeah.
Sat my car waiting for my daughter-in-law and I had a good look at it. But that side there is a block of flats and they're new.
Yes.
And it blends in quite well. Then where these are going to be built, it's just a short, stumpy, untidy looking. Not very nice place. Whereas if this is built, it will fill the whole street and it'll. What do you call it? Street something or other.
Change the street scene.
Street scene. It makes the street scene look a lot better like that. And if we're talking about. Uh, overdevelopment, why did they build that one on the left? Why were they allowed to build that? And across the road where I was waiting, it's, I think it's called Wyvern House. It's, uh.
Yeah.
Loads of flats, elderly people, I think. You know, so all you do is, is filling in a little gap.
It's how they fill it in though.
Yes, I think that's the point.
Yeah, I would say that's overdevelopment. I agree with you.
I don't think it should be any higher than that.
Absolutely not, but I also think that maybe they can lessen it to the point where it's better called.
What are you going to have there then? Just that?
That's never the answer. You can't turn around and say something like, what would you have there instead? It's a case of you're looking at the development that you're looking at.
I think it's all right.
Uh, councillor Green.
I just think, I mean, we've, we've done well. We've got it reduced.
Thank you.
From six to four, um, and they are level with the, the existing street scene. I mean, do you want a three story building? Would that be acceptable? I think a four story building is better.
I can see a four story building makes sense in the street scene. I think I'm concerned about the number of flats that they're still trying to.
Exactly that.
They don't, they don't.
They can tie with room size regulations.
No, they don't.
Well, we could, we could raise that then.
Yeah.
But councillor. Much going to say the same as councillor Austin. Can we look at the floor plans of the, um.
Well, I think it's the conservation officer says.
I mean, because I agree with the look of that on the street scene.
So we just object to overcrowding. That's as simple as that.
But what about the, the inside?
Then, then they look at the, the amount of flats, so we're not objecting to the design, they say.
Appearance of it on the outside. I've got underground parking, which is a big.
Which is very good.
Yes, very good, yeah.
But there was a worry about that as well.
Shall we restrict ourselves to complaining about the room size?
Yeah, but we're still worried about.
Yeah, I think we, we think it's overdevelopment.
I think it's overdevelopment because we think room sizes are too small.
Yes, I suppose we object to overdevelopment, not the size of the place or anything else, it's just the size of the flats, so overdevelopment.
Yeah, I'll second that. Can we vote on that?
On what?
Um, we think it's overdevelopment, but you can vote against.
We're not, we're not, we're not commenting about the look, we're not commenting about the height. We just want the, the flats.
Considering what they've already.
Yeah, we're agreeing with you.
We're agreeing with you. We're just saying agreeing with you. Inside that, the flats need to be bigger. That's all we're saying.
So it's.
Let's make that clear then. Let's make that clear that that's what we're concerned.
Yes, so overdevelopment, um, concerns.
On, on size.
Size.
Size of flats.
Of the number inside of flats.
Too many flats.
Okay.
Inside, but yeah, but we like the look of the out, the street. We like the look of the street scene.
Well, we don't even need to say that.
But I'm just, we just need to say that's what we complain about.
Overdevelopment. And they know that because they had a consultation with the conservation officer beforehand. It talks about it.
I think overdevelopment.
Yeah.
Applies.
It does.
I think, no, I think we're talking about something different.
Right. Well, that's what the conservation officer.
It's not specified in the details that we're talking about here. Number one, Cliff Street, it doesn't say about room size. So we're not talking about that, are we? Do you see what I mean? I mean, this is what we're discussing is what's in the detail in this.
Yeah, but having read, looked at it online and read the report. I would support what the conservation officer says about it's overbearing on the street. The room sizes are not up to.
I think it is a.
Okay. It's hard to tell, but councillor Young.
I've just got a query, um, all these new places that are being built. When we were talking, um, when we were doing the plan for Ramsgate and all that, we talked about the width of doorways. So that if people had zimmers or were in. So that if people had zimmers or were in wheelchairs and things, the doorways would need to be so much wider. It doesn't like come up at all in any.
It, no, it comes up in the building regulations, part H, I think, which is disabled access.
Yes.
Um, and it, it does include width of doorways, ramps up to doors, lifts, there's a lift.
With the flats, you know, it's so cramped.
It's in the build, it's in the building regulations, yeah.
Got a proposal on the table, we need to vote on it.
So what's the proposal? Can we repeat the proposal?
It's considered as overdevelopment due to the number and size of the flats.
So councillor Green, you're suggesting it's not overdevelopment? Do you just want to say we object on the number and size of, of the overdevelopment?
Change that.
So we object on the number of size of flats.
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by councillor Austin, so we're to vote, Pat.
All those in favour of that proposal?
Yeah. To you.
All those against.
Against.
I'm going to abstain because would like to get to more.
Oh, my dear.
Cheers.
Which one is coming on now?
Right, next.
Right.
Already booked.
Four against.
Right, forty nine A Harbour Parade. Oh, they want to extend their opening hours to four A M, that horrible orange chicken shop.
It's not orange chicken.
It is.
I just object anyway, even before we talk about it.
Yes, indeed, here we go. So, yeah, so the, this is the. Obviously, so here about the opening hours because of the.
Absolutely.
This is the building that has flats immediately above and to either side, and there are many, many more residents now living in the immediate vicinity and a hotel in the immediate vicinity, and it's going to be very noisy and it's totally inappropriate.
And the, the one in Harbour Street, the chicken one there, only opens the same hours as the taxi office, ten till four. And they, they're really unhappy about that.
We should definitely, definitely object to four A M.
Yes, yeah.
The others haven't got that, have they?
No, yeah, I, I object.
Well, the one in Harbour Street has.
Well, this one?
The one that, this is Harbour Parade.
Oh, yeah.
The one in Harbour Street, uh, Wayne in the Vietnamese Thai is.
Got four A M.
Is work, no, no, he's not four A M, but the chicken shop next door is four A M and it contributes to the disorder.
Misorder.
Yeah.
What, what do we call that? What are we objecting under? I mean, I would object to.
Oh, yes, I think particularly.
On the grounds of disturbance to the residents.
Residents.
I propose that we object for the disturbance to residents.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Can we vote on that?
I agree.
Yep. Councillor Green, are you voting? Yeah.
If you say all those in favour.
Those in favour, right, okay. And the next one is advertising opposite thirty nine Market Road.
It's already advertising, isn't it? They're making that run, aren't they?
I, um, I called in because I remembered the very lengthy conversation that we had last time this came up and that there were a number of questions, I couldn't remember what they were, so it's nice to see them on the screen. Um, and I don't know what changes have been made or what answers have been received to those, uh, points that we raised last time. So that's really why I, I called that one in.
Okay, do you want to explain it, as you explain to me? And those questions are, have been answered within the application.
Right, so that, that's, that was a good thing I was thinking of.
So they've actually issued the statement, so, um, to answer number three, I've seen the display of Fannet, um, they're actually saying it's going to be a mass upgrade of all advertising course throughout Fannet. They haven't detailed other areas, but they're stating that it's going to be happening around Fannet.
So this is the first one?
This will be like one of the first ones.
Right.
Um, so that's to answer number three. So to answer number one, the luminescent levels are three hundreds candela meter squared at nine and at the on a full white display. Um, and that's in accordance with the illum, illuminated advertising, um, guidance that they have. Um, the light levels on site are appropriate enough for the area will mimic the poster that is being placed, um, that is set on, on the side manually. Um, and then to answer whether static scrolling or moving, there will be static images that will be displayed only, there won't be any flashing images rolling, it'll be just static. They have suggested that it would be a ten second change for each advert. K C C have, uh, stated, just find it. So Kenham Highways have been consulting and raised no objection at this call, however, they raised concerns of the short, the slow duration with every ten seconds. They propose that there's evidence that the timing signal should be eighty seconds. The acting agent confirmed agreement to the slow duration during the amendment in line with K C C's comments. They're all of accepting for a longer. Um, the reason that they did it for ten seconds, they've done a little formula, so this is based on five years of accident data. So on the two lines here are where the boards will be. So there's, looking here, there's actually only one, two, three accidents that have happened in the road, one being serious. And they've actually said the serious accident that was proposed, the boards were not physical. And the one that happened in the middle was a car turning as it gone through a red light. Um, so they're saying that in either direction, a hundred meters in either direction, both thirty half hour, the distance that you're seeing is this seven point four second. So that's why they're suggesting a ten second rollover because by the time you pass it, it won't change. If you sat at the traffic lights or a speedo.
Get more entertainment.
Yeah, but they're, they're on board with accepting K C C's.
Councillor Green?
I suppose that we support the eighty second, um, change over.
Yes.
Time, and say that any less than that would be too distracting to motorists.
Okay, I'll second that. Can we vote on that please? Right, so everybody agrees that, otherwise. Thank you. We have no comment, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. I bet that site will be built on soon.
I think that could be.
Yeah, exactly.
Whether or not you're in it.
Yeah.
Um. Okay. I think that's it with the planning application.
You have to propose excluding the public.
Indeed, yeah.
I propose excluding the public and, yes, and I need, is that anybody else?
I can do it. All those in favour?